April twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Adequate notice that this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meeting Act, has been provided that copy of the notice specifying the date, time, and location was one, posted on the bulletin board outside of Borough Hall; two, mailed fax or emailed to the Courier-News; and three, given to the Clerk Administrator. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll call.
Peter Rosensky.
Here.
Dennis Sullivan.
Here.
Randall Brady.
Here.
Art Aikens.
Here.
Jason Kraska.
Here.
Larry Cleveland.
Here.
Christopher Attick.
Here.
Anne Utter.
Here.
Bernie Nevada, Andrea Dare, Al Theresis will not be present this evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda is ordinance two-six-six-one dash two-two dash zero-one-one-eight, which is the electric vehicle supply service E S E parking spaces, which we've covered already.
Ordinance.
So what exactly? I'm sorry.
I think there was a noticing problem.
So what, are we just reaffirming that we are finding it consistent with the master plan and have no further recommendations to make? Okay, so we need a motion? Correct.
So moved.
Second.
And then I'll just reaffirm for the record, there were no changes to what we sent you at the council. At the council level, so you're voting on what we approved at this body in these two, three meetings.
Last. Okay, so roll call.
Peter Rosensky.
Yes.
Dennis Sullivan.
Yes.
Randall Brady.
Yes.
Art Aikens.
Yes.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Christopher Attick.
Yes.
Anne Utter.
Yes.
And so Tony, if you would just let Kevin know that it was passed tonight, I believe it will be on for agenda.
I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is the resolution for Oak Somerville LLC, two thousand and twenty dash oh-eight oh-oh-eight P.
So moved.
Second.
Who did the second?
I agree.
Roll call.
Peter Rosensky, yes. Dennis Sullivan.
Yes.
Randall Brady.
Yes.
Art Aikens.
Yes.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Christopher Attick.
Yes.
Like that will allow them then to pull from it, I guess, since it's been affirmed at this body.
Talking about the.
Oak.
Yes, so he's moralized, not listed in the plans.
Okay.
But yeah, that's correct.
Okay, excellent.
We're not keeping them back.
No.
We're not.
We're not keeping them back. Okay, next is A R B approval for BOMA five-twenty, which is basically the sign.
And the graphics.
And the graphics on the windows. Everybody get one of these or do you need to test it? Everybody has one? Okay, so if nobody has any objections, we can make a motion.
So moved. Second.
Let's go.
Peter Rosensky.
Yes.
Dennis Sullivan.
Yes.
Randall Brady.
Yes.
Art Aikens.
Yes.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
Christopher Attick.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Anne Utter.
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, Chon Chan, three thirteen East Main Street, parking corporate office, control, a cap for toys and aviation hobby gifts. Roll call. You're gonna recuse yourself?
Yes.
It doesn't warrant a case, it doesn't warrant a case of that.
In the record, we're like, Larry Cleveland, board member refusing himself from the dais and going to the public at seat of property owner.
Okay, welcome. So are you representing?
Yes, I'm representing E C F so close in this. My name is Chun Dang Yuen Chan, S H A N. I'm the project manager of public relations. So I'm here to discuss with the planning board our application for parking determination. Our business is a specialty online business that sells aviation auto properties. The business is internet based and our client are internet based as well. We are contracted by East Main Street Property. We are looking to purchase the property from Nick and Kate Feenster, the present owners. The building where they bought it was used as a dental office and a residence.
Before we start, if you don't mind, I'll try and get some little housekeeping out of it.
Okay, go ahead.
I want to make sure you guys are before the right board. And we saw on the floor plans, there's some reference to retail use. Can you just explain to us a little bit about what, I know you're internet based.
Yes.
What is that area of the floor going to be used as far as retail goes?
Sure, so this is the first floor for East Main Street. So in the front, right side of the first floor, there is a room here. We marked it a showroom, a showroom. So this is the entryway after coming in. It looks like it's a station. So this is the picture of it. So to us, it looks like it's a station, a walkway that after you come in, and then there's a station that looks like a reception area. And so we think this is where the dental office was used before as a reception area, and then the engineering office was using it as an entryway. So for us, we don't really need a reception area. So what we thought is that in this area, we will display some of the information about our company and products, along with some of the order and aviation models that we have on our online catalog. So.
Will you be selling anything directly out of that location?
No, no, this is just for display, so that people, when they come in, they do see, you know, our business is for aviation and auto, and all our sales is online.
So who would be coming into the facility if it's all online?
So the people would be placing their orders, our clients, in case there are a customer that wanted to inspect the product, take a look at it, they can come in and do that, and it will be by appointment only. And we don't expect many clients to be coming in. That way, most of them will be viewing our products online through our website or through Amazon's website.
Is there any ability for someone to come in and leave with any product whatsoever? Other than maybe marketing materials or something like that?
No, no.
They can't come in and pay, and take one of them.
No, we would direct them to go into the website and place the order.
And then it's shipped directly to the.
Yes, so we have two methods. We use Amazon for our inventory and inventory management. So one method is that they go onto our website, E C F so dot com, and then they place the order, and then Amazon would then ship it directly from our Amazon inventory location. And in that case, they would put it into a brown box and then ship it to the client. In that case, we pay a little bit higher fee. And then the second method is through Amazon. The client goes into Amazon to place the order, and then it's fulfilled through Amazon. It would come with, it would be shipped in a box that says Amazon, and it goes directly to the customers. In that case, it pays the landlord.
So you don't store anything on the side of this building? Everything is in the warehouse?
Yes, in the Amazon inventory.
So you would not have an inventory in that, in this location, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Just a display model.
Yeah, and so, you know, what we also wanted to do is, we'll use it to create an online catalog. So we wanted to have it like a, to be able to take pictures.
So you have like a photography space?
Yes, yes. Yeah, so it'll be yours.
So if I'm driving down the street and I don't know the interior of your business, I'm not going to be drawn to the building
Yes.
on the web to say, oh, I'm gonna hop in there and look up a remote control, whatever. I would have to have previous knowledge of your product, your services, make an appointment, and then proceed.
Yes.
Before I decide to purchase it.
Yes, and we also want to clarify that in terms of the supply room, like on the floor plan, we put a supply room on the first floor and second floor. Really, the supply room to us is to put in equipments like the fax machine, copier.
Office equipment.
Yeah, office equipment, exactly. And then the second floor, we also put a, a supply room, but the room is really small, so this is where we wanted to put our traditional office.
All right, so Mike, do you feel that that is a permitted use according to the ordinance? Do you think it falls within the itself, it's not allowed?
No, it's my opinion it's permitted use because it's a showroom, essentially, and everything being purchased online. And it's a showroom only for customers who know all the product. That's what the mayor said, it's not gonna be a huge sign out there.
Not a destination.
Right.
It's a.
It's an online business that has the capacity, you want to see the product you can. Otherwise, all the business is done over, correct?
Correct.
And I assume that would be a condition of approval that is not revoked and that would use sometime down the road.
Yes, it'd be a condition that professional office use be maintained, not a retail use.
Because it's not a retail.
Right, it's not a retail. What the doctor is saying is to make sure we clarify that the showroom is for an online business, not to be confused with a showroom for retail sales. So there's not confusion in five, ten, twenty years. Hopefully, you guys stay longer, but.
Okay, so are there, aside from approval for use of the building, is there variance that's attached to this or?
Well, it's some parking.
Parking issues.
So before we go there, any other questions on that asset?
That was my only concern when I first read this and I saw the word showroom.
Yeah.
I had the same question, I guess, if you had care, is this, is this a use variance, C one or C two, whatever?
Yeah.
Does it belong to the zoning board?
Yeah.
And for what we've heard now, it is.
Basically.
It's not a retail.
It's basically an office.
Just for quick clarification, when you say aviation, so you're talking about drones?
No, no, it's a model plane, multi-aviation model.
So a remote and control?
No, 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 just a model, just a model.
So wait, guys, 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 I just, I wanted to get your retail issue out now, where you both been, so we can actually get testimony.
Now that, now that we've confirmed that they're before the appropriate board,
let's kind of backtrack a little bit.
Okay.
So if you could both raise your hand, you swear the testimony you're about to give this board, so truth, the whole truth is not.
I do.
And then before, so you can start and give your presentation, and then before Mr. Chan does the first, you can just give his name as well as your own. So can you just say your name again for the board and for the?
Sure, Chun Dang Yuen Chan, S H A N.
You can sit down.
Yes, please.
Thank you for indulging us, we didn't need to stop you, we just want to make sure you got the procedural stuff out.
Okay, thank you.
Go right ahead.
So we are contracted by East Main Street Property. We're looking to purchase the property from Nick and Kate Feenster, the present owners. The building where they bought it was used as a dental office and as a residence. So Nick and Kate went through an application process in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, with some of you to have the hope that they use as an office. At that time, the parking lot in the, in the wear was added or expanded to its present size. Steve Parker, engineer, prepared the site plan for the parking lot extension in which the parking lot was put in place. We have needed the resolution from the summer view planning board as part of the application. Unfortunately, we do not have the signed resolution. The town's fire was destroyed by the flood, so we got the resolution from the engineer, Steve Parker. Now, we plan to use this building as the corporate office for a cap so toys and gift. Corporate office is a permitted use in the P O L zone. We were informed by the zoning office that we need to obtain parking determination from the planning board. There are presently only three employees. The previous owner, Nick Feenster, had essentially an office business there since two thousand and was up to eleven employees. So the proposed use will be a much later impact on the area, and we're not proposing any change to the property. We plan to use it as is. And we understand from the zoning office that for corporate office, since there is no parking calculation determination, we will need an approval from the planning board. Since there are very few employees and we expect less traffic, we plan to use the existing parking spaces that were put in place by the owner in the back. There's no improvements up in the suite. The existing front parking spaces and two parking spaces in the garage, on premise, are showing the original site plan, as well as the most recent survey from January this year, showing those parking spaces. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter and in our request for parking determination approval. We appreciate this.
Okay.
So three employees?
Yes.
At all times, and then possible visitors to meet with you.
Yeah, and it would be, we don't expect too many clients to be in.
And what about, you won't be having any deliveries because you're not storing anything outside, so any delivery would be just stationary office supplies. Did anybody have any questions?
You mentioned the few visitors would be by appointment only, so that there shouldn't be competition for the spaces.
Yes, yes, that, yes, that's one of the key points. So we don't, because we only have three employees, and then if there are clients who come, they would have to make appointments, so we don't see any competition.
My final question about the park, if it's determined, they don't want to add any parking because they don't feel they need it, they have an access. Are we allowed to reduce the parking and convert some of that back to green? Or does it, once it's there, because I know the coverage is over fifty percent right now with the prior approval, or does the prior approval supersede any action that you would take at this moment?
Yeah, well, Carrie just said, if you look at the engineering planning report, there's some stormwater management issues going on out there, and.
That's sort of what I'm leading up to.
Stormwater management, because there was an approval for a fresh drain, dry well, that didn't work. So I think there's a pump in there that I don't think is working. And if you look at the curving, it was designed, if it didn't work, the overflow would go into the joint properties to the north. It doesn't.
I'm sure we're gonna hear about that in.
So what happens is, if the pump doesn't work and the system doesn't drain, which obviously doesn't drain, because a pipe was put in, it connected to the county system. But I think, I don't have this detail because it was post-installation. Sometime after it was installed, the system obviously failed. So the solution was to put a pump in, it was to float like a sump pump, and a pipe that ties it in. But if you go out there, it doesn't look like it's working at all. It was all the water that was going to the neighbors.
And the grade goes from the south to north.
Yes, every night, this, the natural grade, the parking lot driveway east and the roof leaders of the house, the western roof leaders go in the basement, I think to a sump pump that pumps it back to the tail dry well. And then the roof leaders to the east side are piped above ground around the back to within ten or fifteen feet of where the grade is, that's covered over, the stormwater catch basin grade. And actually, the stormwater isn't going to the grade, it goes on the fence and onto the neighbors' properties.
To the void.
Yeah, so we have stormwater issues to, we have the mayor's talking about. And there might be some lighting. We went through the resolution, lighting was approved in ninety-nine with the conditions of no off-site trespass. So I don't like the fixtures because of spotlight, they don't need current ordinance, but the board did approve some type of lighting. So I'm more concerned, if you look at the report on light trespassing residential properties in this village, and the resolution said that if applicable, they had put a handicap spot in there.
They don't have.
They have to.
I mean, they don't have it now.
They don't have it now, so we'd have to go with at least one, it has to be by code, one man accessible space, which means the overall parking spaces are going to go down by at least one, because it's going to be an eight by eight, so it's going to be sixteen feet, so you're going to lose essentially two spaces.
Going back to my original question, if we have a sixty-three percent coverage, which was previously approved, if they don't need all those spaces, do we have any latitude to convert those spaces back to green?
I think what Mike's getting at that ties into your question is that one of the conditions I would recommend to the board, if you seek to approve the application, is that all of the prior issues that were not properly addressed in the nineteen ninety-nine resolution be properly addressed. I don't know what that entails, if that entails using some of that parking, if that entails reconfiguration, if that entails, you know, I don't really know that's this area. But, you know, it very well could impact the existing site layout. It also could be just as easy as fixing the pump.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the applicant is inheriting this, didn't do any of this, but it's here.
About the property.
It's here and.
It's here.
There is an issue, and again, we're gonna hear from it from the public later.
Yeah, based on how it's site inspection, it appears to be going totally on the neighbors' property.
So that needs to be, so it works.
That, you know, housekeeping is striking.
Is it flowing west or is it throwing to the north and then it flows to the west? To the west.
So northwest, it wraps around, it's just wet back there because it's designed.
I was in the day, it hadn't rained in a few days.
So are you aware of these issues?
Yes.
Is there any hearing of them, or are you aware of them?
Yeah, so we did get the report from the engineering office, and what we did was Nick Feenster actually provided an affidavit as to some of the explanation for this. And so we also have Brent Franklin, he is the realtor representing both Nick and I. And so he actually sold the property to Nick, so he also have some of the information about the history. Would it be okay for him to testify?
Sure, we just take this for a minute.
Okay.
Exactly, we can't accept the affidavit because he's not here to be able to be questioned, but wait a certain. Before we start this one procedural issue, I just want to mark the exhibits that we've got so far. So we've got our usual A one, the application and supporting docs. A two, we know there's some publication proofs. A three is Mike's report of April twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. A four is the survey from Brunswick West dated January sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. And A five is the initial site plan for Parker Engineering dated June twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-nine.
I do have a question, Mike. The stormwater impotence, where on the property is it the most egregious? Is it in that northwestern corner?
Yes.
That's where it's, it's where it's historically wet back there anywhere.
It's designed that when the, if the dry well would fail and pond in the parking lot, there's a gap.
It's not near the house.
Curving is missing in the northwest corner, so it doesn't come upon the parking lot. It'll roll right out into the joint property.
But we don't want that.
It's not near the house. That's fine.
Let's swear in the real.
So the testimony you're about to give this board, you treat the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, what did you need?
Brent Franklin.
Okay, and Brent, just a few questions. You're the realtor for this property?
I was Nick Feenster's, the seller's realtor. And I sold it to the Chinese.
Okay, and you're not testifying here today by as a professional engineer or anything in that capacity? And you'll just be testifying as to your personal knowledge of the property and the conditions?
Yes, and I did speak directly to Nick about this and was involved twenty-seven years ago. So when Nick got approval, the town of Somerville, or this board, whatever, wanted to, they knew it was wet in that back corner of the property. So they, they're, they asked Parker Engineering to create dry wells. And I believe there's three dry wells on his site plan. So those were installed within a year of reselling the building. And they immediately failed. So I think it's like solid shale back there. And the water comes from the residential properties that are on, behind this property. The curb, now, let me, let me just, when it immediately failed, this board or Somerville or someone said, oh, put a sump pump in there, and what you're gonna do is pump the water out when they fill up and get ready for the next storm. So all it was gonna do was pump it out towards the street. The problem is, the, if you look at the elevation, so from the street, it just keeps coming back to the back of that parking lot. The curb cut, which is mentioned in your letter, was not designed to allow the water to flow into the neighbors. It's allowed, it was, it was created to allow it to flow from the neighbors to that catch basin. So Somerville's correction, well, Somerville, you know, Nick complained about it. He said, you made me spend this money on these dry wells, and they're not working. Somerville came in, dug a trench, put, I'm sure already reinforced concrete pipe in, pipe in there, and it gravity drains from the dry well to the storm sewers. It goes directly into the storm sewers. So that's the correction. So the water from the neighbors' back comes to that catch basin from the parking lot to the north of Nick and Case. I'm sure some water comes from the other lot, because it degrades that way. You're correct, the PVC, you know, I think it was suggested by an inspector, hey, put the PVC from that one liter back to that catch basin. So all that water goes to that catch basin and gravity drains to the storm sewer. One of the sump pump, there's two sump pumps in the basement, one sump pump goes to the storm sewer, the other sump pump just dumps out from the southeast side of the property. So Nick says it works great, I mean, well, I mean, as well as it does. I mean, if we get a crazy storm flood, there's, you know, there's gonna be some water that probably ponds back there. He said, once they put that gravity drain in, it works great. So, so the, the curb cut is allowing water to flow to that drain from the neighbors' property to the north.
And it's working?
Yes.
If it's draining work to a zoo or somewhere?
It doesn't pound. I mean, there was a mention about there were some leaves on top, if.
So needs to be maintained?
Yes.
So, so it's working?
Yeah, he's saying, I don't, there's nothing on the plans that show tying in by gravity.
Oh, okay.
You don't see it on the plans, you see the dry wells, and that's it.
It wasn't part of the original site plan.
That's why.
It was, right, once that didn't work, then the fix was, and it was Somerville came in and did.
Yeah.
Oh, so somewhere in the record.
You can see the cut. They put the dry well into.
We'll check for it in the record.
So, so the concern about the drainage, I think is we've solved that. Dennis asked whether they could, we could take back some of the impervious coverage. Is that doable, or are they grandfathered in with what they have, so we can't ask them to remove? Go back to the fifty percent? Is that what your question was?
That would be my question, if they have X X parking, which is, to me, it sounds like it. Well, there are two issues here.
But then we're gonna have trouble with the drainage again, because it's built into that parking lot.
Well, I don't know, I'm asking if we, if we shouldn't even consider it, then we move on. But it just seems to me, if we can get rid of some blacktop and redirect water into grass, I don't know.
But it's gonna be, it's gonna be pervious, it's gonna be shale. I think we're better off directing it to the dry wells.
I'd like to see the plans show the gravity working, it's a working system, but it's very wet back there. When I was back there last week, it was very, very wet. I'm not saying it's always.
Like it was pooling.
It was, it was, given it's been raining a lot, but it's wetter than I would like to see for.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna hear about the existing conditions from the public when we open it up, because this has been an ongoing issue, not just on this property, but on the entire stretch from Rehill to Vandivera in the back. And I'm sure that's gonna come up.
Yeah, we're not gonna.
There's adequate parking because it's a dental office. There are a lot more people that park there than what these folks want. But the question is, is this going to actually help mitigate anything? Or is it just gonna look nice, you know, wow, we're gonna get rid of some asphalt, and people go, oh, it looks great, but this can't have any practical application. And that may be problematic at this point.
Well, I think, I think what Mike is saying is he doesn't, he can't answer that question right now.
Right, I mean, the dry well, it's still put in, and that's why.
The pipe is probably, the pipe might be silted in also.
Right, exactly, so.
The other.
It's a maintenance issue, guys, everything works, it's a maintenance issue.
So can we, can we?
Can I just say one more thing? The other issue is, the original approval was granted to the property owner. It's still the property owner. This applicant is not the property owner, and by virtue of agreeing, which I think is probably where we have to go to change the prior variance that was granted, they don't really have the ability to agree to vacate an approval that was granted to the property owner. That's, just from a legal perspective, that's that concern. Now, certainly, we could put in there as a condition that once the stormwater issues are resolved, then we find out where the gravity lines are, and that everything's working properly, that the applicant will go either back to the property owner go either back to the property owner to see if they would be willing to vacate those, if, again, it works and makes sense, or when they come into ownership, will agree to do certain things. And we can, we could frame it that way, but just ordering that that removal be a condition of approval, I think is problematic if this applicant without the property.
So so first, should we just come up with how many parking spots we think they need even before?
Well, I think they have, I think we can determine they have adequate parking.
But do we have to give, do we have to give a number then? Down the road, we'll be talking about?
No, no.
Jason, I'd I'd rather focus on the system.
Alright.
And if it's built so, but
Yeah, the problem with
I agree, if it's maintenance and we can
The the problem with the dry wells is they're usually very deep. And gravity probably puts the pipe higher. So I don't want standing water for mosquitoes. So I like to see what's out there and have everything efficiently drained, have the catch basin work, have all this work. So that, what what I've found is in the most time, you put the pipe in the ground, anybody forgets it though.
And it gets them.
Maintenance is not something good Americans are good with. It's not. So
It works till it fails.
It works till it fails. It's out of sight of mind. It's not, if someone's not complaining, you're not touching it. So who knows? Maybe it's all silved in, as Cara said. Maybe, I would like to see televised and make sure everything is functioning and we don't have a mosquito problem going on. Meaning that the the dry wells are still there and the pipe is four feet high in the bottom. We don't want four feet of standing water. Uh so we can, you know, it could be sand filled, you know, filled in with brown, sand, clean the pipes out and just see how this thing works. Uh it's very difficult to say, spend, you know, fix it, you know, modify everything until you know
Okay.
what the baseline is.
So my question is, for approval, is it the existing owner that has to do that? Or is it the people before us who don't yet own the building? Like, is it a condition of approval for them or a condition of, you know what I'm asking?
It's a, it would be a condition of approval that the prior conditions of the prior resolution were resolved and satisfied to the satisfaction of of the board engineer. Because they weren't with regard to lighting and with regard to stormwater. Um in addition to that, so that would be a condition of their approval. And at that point, we have
Then they negotiate who actually takes care of it.
Okay.
Okay, alright.
I like that wording.
In addition to that, I'd like to understand what you want. Do you need to see engineering plans that show where everything is? Do you just need to televise the line? Like, what exactly?
Well, the borough for then, I can go with, let's see Brendan and maybe get some records and try to maybe the borough put this in fifteen years ago, there's some records something to look at. Obviously, if the applicant's tying in and the borough's pipe is completely filled in
The the borough makes it.
It's hard to put that burden on the applicant if it's a borough infrastructure issue. So I would like to baseline everything.
How do we get that, though? That's my question.
Well, let's see if we can televise it, if we can get better records from the applicant and the current property owner. Or we just do a site investigation, survey it, figure it out. Obviously, we should first quantify everything that's working. If it's not working right, what's the not working right?
Okay.
I have another question, Mike. Were you able to tell if any of the water that was on this property was coming from neighboring properties? Are we cleaning up that home? Because Dennis brought up an interesting point and and I agree. I have, I have physicians over there and, you know, I park over there once in a while and I see the stream running in the back. And we don't know if we're going to ask these folks to mitigate the problem for the whole block. So that's the other thing. I mean, there may be water that's not their water.
I hear you, doctor. That's what I'm saying. See if their system functions. If their system function takes care of their site, I think that's all the reason why we have to work on that. But if we're doing that, we'll look at the borough system. And maybe we just need to get everything out. And maybe everything is great. I just don't have any, it's wet back there. It seems to be not functioning the way it should be functioning. And it could be just
It's supposed to be maintenance, yeah. Okay. So do you understand what we just
No, we should use the board's
So does that mean like the township will do some, I guess, um investigation on the site itself? To determine if it's something, let's say, you know, is a maintenance? Or is it like um something that was put in uh previously by the, I guess, the township or borough? And if there's an issue um and it was related to, I guess, that eastern uh drain drain system that's there, then the township um or the borough would then um provide a remediation um for that area to to sell it off?
And in addition to that, if it's not, then the original condition of the approval that was requiring
Proper drainage?
Exactly, then that would kick in. So we could kind of make a joint condition.
It might be just the Somerville trench, but it also might be something on the site of the original design that is not functioning properly. And then it would be on the onus of the whoever is owning the property at the time to fix it.
Have you closed on the property yet?
Uh, no, uh we haven't closed. We just contracted. Um but we are concerned that um if there are like um additional expenses, um you know, to sell whatever issue.
That becomes part of your negotiation with the seller, and that's not on us.
And we don't know the timeframe in which.
Well, we can try to jump on that. Um typically, these things get resolved or addressed after a moralization of resolution, which normally is is within a month, right, Karen?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay. So she can have the resolution moralized within two weeks, you say? And uh what I think what the board is saying, what I'm advocating, is you're only responsible for yours normally. So we just focus, if you don't have the records, focus on your system. If it ties into the borough system and there's a problem there, then there'll be nothing asked of you to do because your system is taking care of your site. If it becomes an issue with the storm, the borough's stormwater protections. So we have to do some fact finding, but I just wanna make it clear that no one's looking for the applicant here, at least I'm hearing, to pick up the whole neighborhood's problem, if there is a problem that's not draining properly because of whatever the reason is. But I, what I'm concerned is you have an eighty eight, you gotta put the van accessible spacing, which is basically paint. You have to put it, it's not, we can't grant a variance because it's a federal estate requirement. And you're gonna have to put the signage in, which is a hand, if you got any shot, you can go see the signage and the handicapped symbol and the striking. You're gonna have to do that. And you're gonna have to do some surveys to show that less than two percent slip all this stuff. So there's gonna be a little bit there. And then uh cracked ceiling. I mean, the rest of it is just going out with the light here. I understand there's lighting out there. And I'm, I don't know if the board agrees with this, but I'm not, I'm saying your light lighting is approved in some form. So I am into not looking at what's there. Is it trespass?
Okay.
We're saying if there is trespass
If it's a new application, I'd be all over this.
Yeah, but this is not a new application.
Right, so I don't think, the board
There's never been complaints about trespass since then, right?
Right. I'm just worried about trespass, the lights, the lights right now. So they have the the nitrous, it meets coordinates. I'm I'm for the board's acceptable or not. I'll just
Yeah, we don't need
What I'm saying is that a new application, your lighting out there would not be acceptable. From how it is, just, it wouldn't be acceptable. But what I'm saying is it's there, you got some kind of approval. This is to make sure the light trespass doesn't impact anybody's property.
Any of the neighbors.
Which is, like, you park the parking lot, it doesn't spill over to the neighbor's property.
And he'll help you figure out exactly how to analyze that and
Yeah.
And in terms of the accessible parking, I understand uh the private, I said, we do uh paint it and then put in a sign. Is it okay for us to draw that into like a survey or, you know, after after we put that in? Or send pictures to say, um here we put in the um the accessible parking as to to
Remind my C.
Where do you want it, where do you want it to be memorialized?
It's usually the closest space.
Yeah, but where do you want them to, do you want them to do a site plan drawing with the new parking layout drawn on it? Is that the way to memorialize it?
Do you wanna show where to put it? I I know I'm gonna regret this, but On a normal application, you'd have an engineer do all this, but I am, I know it, I know this is expensive. So I'll try to give you the details you need and try to work with you so you don't have that expense.
Okay.
All right? Otherwise, you're gonna have to have a survey go out.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
The parking lot is there.
So I'm just, I think if we get a copy of the site plan and the parking, what they have and show the new layout.
I I can give you the 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 dimensions of what you have to do for the eighty eight stuff. And if we can meet the field, I can show you where to put it in and maybe with a four foot level, we can figure out this level one up. Uh, look, I say these things, it sounds easy, but it can run the hiccups.
Yeah, it's easier for you.
What I'm saying is, I think the board's bending over backwards for you because of your unique situation that they would normally never do on a new application. That's what I'm trying to convey to you. And I understand what the board wants, so if the board says jump, I say hell on.
We just want the handicap.
Right.
Yeah.
And um so you would also be the one that does the determination to see the si- the situation in terms of like the other drainage and
Yeah. I, assuming you don't have any records of how this thing works, I would probably go out with Brendan, who's a borough surveyor, and we'd pop the grade, sort this out in the field quickly, look at borough records, and try to ascertain this within your timeframe, which we get the resolution done the eleventh. Obviously, we'd like to get some answers for you within two weeks or so, because I I understand exactly what you're saying. We, no one wants to go over closing. And I understand that this is an open-ended blank check that's problematic. So I I think we can do whatever it takes to get this reasonably done in a timely fashion.
Okay. Any other issues? Those are the three, right? The lighting, the drainage?
The sump pump, which is the realtor's, they have to do a little inspection, make sure the sump pump isn't contained with the Santris or Santris.
The other way, it might be with the street trees.
Street trees, the board has to make a decision. There's no street trees. I had a question about signage. There's no signage. You all now free standing?
There's no from the dentist's office, there's no
Well, the applicant's not proposing anything. So I had a question about, is your signage proposing? Is the signage proposing? Obviously, the testimony should be to meet the ordinance.
Yes.
So if you do put up signage, you're gonna meet the ordinance and not do anything?
Yeah, because we see that they um they do have the existing free standing sign in front.
Yeah.
Uh so we'll use that and we'll make sure of putting whatever application is required to make sure everything meets the the borough um requirements.
Okay.
Back to the tree, the street tree.
And the tree, so we can ask for putting it that we need.
The requirement would be two street trees. There are no power lines on that side of the street, if I, if my memory corrects. They're all on the south side.
I I go back to the original approval. And that's that's the only concern I have. My bracket was from ninety nine, probably
I'm trying, I'm trying to, I'm trying to re- remember.
So in the original approval, if they didn't put them in and paid, put them in the parks or whatever.
There wasn't a requirement.
It wasn't like the board weighed it, it just wasn't addressed.
We didn't have that, we didn't put that requirement until Larry, what, ten, twelve years ago? You can't plant trees, you make a donation. That's a more recent
It's been more than that.
Is it, but this this may have not, this may have preceded that.
Yeah, I would say
So then I think we can ask for tree and street trees.
Oh, six. I, it's been around since I've been around with the ZO five. I can't see, you don't see it in the resolution?
No.
So I don't think it was addressed at all.
So would you be willing to, or again, one of the owners of the property, be willing to plant two street trees?
Um, yeah, we have a question on that because it looks like the property itself has tree in the front already.
Which is maybe why it wasn't addressed.
Well, that was not, it's not a street tree, I'd be
Yeah, but I would wanna put tree trees if you have a big tree
Yeah, they do have a big tree.
How about the applicant will work with the board engineer to determine
Determine whether a tree, and if not, a donation, a monetary donation is asked and we plant a tree somewhere else in town.
Oh, okay.
So you'd like to agree to that?
The laundry.
It is a very large lawn tree. Maybe one street tree, Mike. Two may not, just may not fit.
Yeah, I
We should at least look at it, Mike, and decide, you know.
What I'm saying is, I think what the mayor's saying, if you look on East Main Street, it'd be nice to see a couple more tree trees.
It would be. But if they have a giant tree that's gonna not let the other ones grow, that's what my concern is.
Right, but
But will that, Mike, will come and look at the property and decide whether there's room to plant a tree or whether the donation should be made, as long as you're willing to agree to that?
Yes.
The donation is
Six fifty.
For a tree.
He'll figure that out.
Yeah, we'll work it out.
See the one or two.
Okay. Oh, now open it up to the public for any comments?
And questions.
And questions uh on this topic? Uh could you step up and state your name?
Daniel Swath, sixteen Grant Avenue. I heard and understood the discussion about the parking situation and retail. Um so list of questions that are going to mention those items, but it may be taken different ways. So my wife and I formulated this uh letter. Our neighbors and I understand that the planning board or zoning board adjustment is able to grant variances from zoning requirements if the applicant is able to prove his or her case. Furthermore, we understand that throughout the process, the applicant must demonstrate that granting of a variance will not create any harm to the public or impair the intent and purpose of his own ordinance. We are concerned that this variance is not in line with the intent of the current zoning and can bring unwanted problems to residential neighborhood. Other professional businesses are already impacting our properties with unmaintained properties, excessive paving of backyards. And I know we have three properties behind us that over, well over fifty percent of their, it's like a hundred percent of the backyard is paved. And all that runs off into our backyard. And regarding that drainage, starts up at Rehill. Years ago, it was described here by the planning board as a two-inch swell. Well, it's about three and a half, four feet wide and a foot and a half deep in our backyard. And that fills up. Given Hurricane Floyd, Hurricane Ida, et cetera, of course, it's gonna fill up. But I mean, in small range storms, it's always up there, use a twelve, fifteen inch concrete pipe on the ground. The property next to ours and theirs apparently are piped right into that, so it doesn't really affect us. But the the other neighbor um that cut in the Belgium block curb you're talking, if that uh drainage pit they have fills up, it runs off into that that ditch. Um Grant Avenue slopes towards the ditch. Uh East Main Street slopes, so you know, everything's going back towards the middle. It kinda works okay, but there's too much runoff. So as I was saying, excessive paving in the backyard, closer flooding runoff to the different properties, lights that are on all night, garbage slash landscaping debris left by the contractors, not the garbage, that's stuff that flows in from Main Street or have the garbage cans of those properties because they don't put lids on. The area is not zoned, question one. The area is not zoned for retail, so shouldn't retail operate with other like businesses in appropriately zoned areas in town? Question two. The letter we received uses the words relief, quote, including, but not limited to, quote, limited to what? This is a broad, non-specific language. Three, approval of the variance may be opening a Pandora's box, allowing for retail sets precedent for retail up and down East Main Street and in other areas that it is not permitted. Four, how does this request fit into compliance with overall zoning of the area and municipal planning? Five, what if other nearby professional building owners ask for changes on East Main Street? Six, the letter states that if approved, there will be limited traffic and customers. How is that to be assured, monitored, and controlled? Seven, what would be the impact of the conversion to retail with regard to noise, litter, parking, lights, signage, and other operating hours? And I heard some of that discussion tonight. Um but that was a question that came up. Eight, what happens if the current business is given a variance to operate as retail and it moves out? Does the property remain zoned for retail? And again, I understand that we're saying this isn't a retail store, but there still may be traffic coming in and out. And lastly, what would be approved limitations for other types of retail in the location that may move in after this business? How do you determine what is an allowable type of retail store? Thank you, Gina Stravick and Daniel Swath. That's all I have. Thank you.
Right now, are the lights on timers?
I'm glad you brought you that. I was gonna suggest that the applicant just turn the lights off in the
I mean, you're not gonna be there all hours of the night. You're gonna, your working hours are nine, five timers.
Yeah, so so it's um ten to six and then on Saturday. And the reason why we do that is um because we want the uh all your happy business. Uh so a lot of customers actually prefer to call us um outside of those hours. So we do shift it in, set it open at nine. Uh we do ten to six and then on Saturdays.
But you're not, after six, you're not in the building, so you can shut the lights out when you leave in that
Shut the lights off and maybe just leave a security light back, like when the residents
Yeah.
Do.
If you're free to do that, then the neighbor Same hours on Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, uh so it's uh uh it's only for three hours on Saturday.
What, what, you know what the three hours are right now?
Uh I think we put in ten to one, I just
And then no Sunday?
No Sunday.
No Sunday.
So we have established this is not going to be retail, so hopefully that will alleviate the concerns that some of the local residents have about changing the use of that area. Basically, it's still open. Anybody else want to make comments?
Yes.
Did you name for the record, an address, please?
Yes.
My name is Larry Cleveland, you live at thirty-four Grant Avenue. And, I live here since nineteen ninety-eight. Backyards are all over wet, even when it's dry, it can get wet. There's a swell or ditch that runs, just like Dan said, from Rehill. And it kind of follows the property line between where Grant Avenue would be and East Main Street would be. But just looking at this drawing from nineteen ninety-nine, it shows the ditch clearly on this property, but I can assure you, it's not. It's all over the place, the ditch is not a standard thing. We've been talking about this since nineteen ninety-nine. The borough has an intellect at the end of Red Avenue that they need to go property to property and trench out the swell or the ditch so they can get it to that underground pipe that goes into the storm sewer grate that's in at the end of that, that goes right through the in Swas's yard, and then the next yard, it gets solidified. This is something that the town has to work with. They can control what they have on their property, and I think that's what the whole point of the detention basins were back then. And the gentleman said that the water comes in, but the water's all over the place. Where it's coming from is, at best, a guess, you have to stand up there and look, but it's all over the place because it gets backed up. The town has to get in there and alleviate, because it would resolve the problem for everybody up and down East Main Street and on Grant Avenue. We've approved on the planning board at least two of the properties further up toward Rehill that were P R O, P. .
O R.
P R O, properties. One was like a psychologist. .
Dr. Geller, yeah.
Yes, that, we did that one. He improved the backyards, but nothing's really changed, it just gets worse and worse and worse over the years. It's been for twenty-four, twenty-five years of neglect, and eventually it's gotta get trimmed out. So, I'm glad to hear that we resolved the retail issue. And I appreciate that, because that, that was a concern. I don't think they're gonna have a problem with parking or anything else like that, especially if it's only gonna be a couple of employees and one or two people coming through. It seems to me like there might be even less in the engineering office that was there for years that required the levels spaces. But I do think that we should talk with D P W and maybe even go out there.
Yeah.
And look at it with the, with the borough engineer to do something about it, just so that it can resolve the problem for everybody. It's not just one or two properties, everybody has this problem.
Larry, does your survey show borough easement?
That's the ques- question.
Well, at this point. .
Because this has come up many, many times.
Well, I, I don't know if my, if my property line shows a easement or not, but I can assure you that no one's gonna say, no, don't come to my property and not solve this water problem. No one's gonna say that.
So, but I think it's a question of. .
Technically, right now, yes. Technically, it's also what is responsible for.
The point is, if we're looking at a, if we are looking at a planned project, we can't just give you and, and somebody else. If we're looking at this as. .
Well, it's on, it's on the whole street.
We have to take a look at the. .
But if you, but if you look at, you look at this. .
Now, Larry, you mentioned that, is there a pipe under there? That's what I'm trying to figure.
No, I think it's just a sewer.
Well, we had test, we had, there was a pipe put, put in at the end of this property that goes to a sewer.
At the front, goes from the detention basin that we put in originally. That was the original solution, three in the back left corner, north, northwest corner.
Right.
Didn't work, now they're trenching it forward to the street. It's not going into the swell.
Okay.
The water is just there in the swell, on the ditch.
Alright, so. .
This, this plan shows the ditch.
So that's something for the council.
That's, that's what I was getting, I don't, we're not, we're not gonna be able to impose anything on this app.
Just representatives from the council will take this with them.
Well, because, because, yes, so that's why I'm saying that we might be able to get something done.
Okay, but I don't wanna keep these people here to solve. .
No, no, I understand, I don't think that they need to.
What I'm saying is, we're suggesting this, if, if there's a sun pump in there and it's pumping the street, we just maintain that, and if there's a, if there's a pipe, we'll deal with that as a separate issue. Just have this on-site system. .
They have to take care of their water, yes.
That's exactly right.
They have to take care of their water, and then a representation from the council.
Yeah, I, I think that's the council issue that. .
Go back to the council saying it's an, it's an issue that I wanted to. .
Well, take a, take a look at this, this drawing from ninety-nine, and you can see where the swell is.
Well, Mike is gonna take a look at it, so. .
Well, what they, what they say is. .
I would suggest that Mike takes a look at it, at least from the standpoint of just an overview, if you will.
Yeah.
And then, something that the council's gonna have to take into account.
This is, this is not a unique situation. I was just on the phone the other day with some homeowners over on Lawport in North Park, and we did what was called a neighborhood treatment.
Yes, so we, we discussed that here. I'm gonna cut you off for this section.
Let me hear you, Larry.
Um, thank you. Anybody else would like to speak to the public? For the public session? Okay, so, could you state the conditions for approval of this?
So, clear about the relief. There's no variance relief. B, C, Q, R, no variance relief necessarily. The reason they're before this board is to determine whether they have sufficient parking based upon the prior approval, and that's what the board has to determine. Some things to condition the approval on once you make that determination. The applicant is represented, there will be no retail sales. That suggests a condition that if there is any change in use other than office and showroom, is testified to, that they have to come back before the board, this applicant or any other applicant. Sinage, any signage must meet the ordinance requirements. The man-accessible ADA space must be provided, and they will work with the board engineer to determine exactly how, where, specifics, sizes, et cetera. All prior conditions of the prior resolution. I don't have a resolution number, but that resolution was from nineteen ninety-nine. And you can attach a copy of that.
Yeah.
And that must all be satisfied to the satisfaction of the board engineer. We don't need to see any new plans with the gravity drainage, or that you are going to, you meaning Mike, the board engineer, will baseline the system that's currently there based upon your review of the property, the board engineer, the borough's records, anything else the applicant can provide, and make determination as to what exactly needs to be done by the borough's standpoint and or the applicant's standpoint to rectify the stormwater issues. If I say satisfaction of all conditions of your report, so anything we talked about here?
Trees.
The trees.
Trees, yeah. If I put in that standard condition, satisfaction of all, that's okay. The applicant will agree to conduct a trespass analysis with the vertical lighting, just in case that's not in there. The applicant will provide a copy of the survey showing the location of the ADA space after they work with the board engineer to determine that and the size. The applicant will work with the board engineer to determine whether one or two additional trees can be planted on the property, the feasibility of that in light of the existing tree that's there. And if not, the applicant will make the appropriate donation, six fifty per tree, again, that's either gonna be one or two, to the borough. The lights will be turned off, with the exception of the rear safety lighting when the business is closed. And that's all I have.
Do we need to put anything about deliveries?
No, because they, they don't get any deliveries.
I'll put that in as a fact, a part of the resolution.
I, I had a question about trash removal.
Corrugation recycling, yeah.
But I'm sure, you're just gonna do curbside pickup, too. Now, you don't have free employees, you're not manufacturing.
Yeah, so our, our trash and recycle rule is that we do the light. So we plan to use the existing engine that's there, in the same, uh, surface. So they provide both trash and also the. .
And you'll keep the lids on it so nothing flows.
Trash, right now I saw the trash thing inside, dumpster proposed, or like, just inside.
No, 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 it'll be just inside the garage, or we can keep the trash, and we recycle inside.
Okay, and that would be public pickup.
Yeah.
This is an kinds of cyber retail operation that I think we're gonna see more of, because, you know, Amazon keeps clogging our road with the, and nobody shops anymore. They eat, but they drink, but they don't shop. And I think you're gonna see more of this as, as time goes by, almost I would call it cyber retail. Very small operation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Let's not use the retail term.
Yes.
No, and it's a cyber. .
Cyber business.
Cyber.
I will move to approve based on the conditions that Karen has laid out.
I will second that.
Great, do we have a roll public? Peter Ossensi, yes, Dan Solomon.
Yes.
Randall Brady.
Yes.
Howard Akins.
Yes.
Jason Carasco.
Yes.
Christopher Ad.
Yes.
Hannah.
Yes.
And that's an hour, huh?
Alright, so, we're not done yet, don't get excited. Items not on the agenda, I don't have anything, I'm opening it to the public for any items not on the agenda.
No, you're not, I'm okay now.
Larry forgot meeting you yet.
I don't have any chairman's comment?
No.
Okay, then somebody's moved to a jury?
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor? Alright, meeting is adjourned.
Remember the cameras, alright.